This meeting to an order, it is six or three. From.
President Hernandez. Vice President Epps.
Here.
Trustee Alcindorano.
Present.
Trustee Banda.
Absent.
Trustee. Toto Mayor.
Here.
We're gonna go ahead and do the case of the allegiance led by Yvonne Toto Mayor.
Ready, begin. March to the people, to the flag for the United States. And to the republics, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the highest.
I'll have a just roll call to show President Hernandez, present.
My apologies, so adjustments to the agenda, the library board will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, no abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar. Consent calendar items and request consent calendar items to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. The library board may also remove items from the consent calendar prior to that portion of the agenda. For purposes of the official city record, the library board may take care of these issues by entertaining a formal motion. Public comment, there's a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the library board on these matters. Matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the library board concerning any item within the board jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the library administrator's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. A one certificates of recognition to the Imperial Public Library literacy services volunteers.
Okay, good evening, my name is Elisa Barajas. I'm a literacy coordinator at the Imperial Public Library. I'm here with two amazing volunteer tutors to discuss the adult and family literacy services funded by CLLS for our lovely community. We offer ESL, conversation, computer, and citizenship classes in which tutors and learners work in one-on-one or small group in small groups in the literacy room on goals set by individual learners. We also offer family literacy services by hosting events where we offer storytime, crafts, and free books for personal library building. The reason we offer literacy services is because approximately forty-eight million adults in the U.S. cannot read above a third grade level. This low literacy rate impacts the socio-economic balance of our society. In two thousand sixteen, ALA defined literacy by stating, literacy is the ability to identify, understand, interpret, create, communicate, and compute using printed and written materials associated with varying context. Literacy involves a continuum of learning in enabling individuals to achieve their goals, to develop their knowledge and potential, and to participate fully in their community and wider society. As of two thousand twenty-four, ALA continues to work on the definition of literacy to include the importance of the library as a literacy community wherein literacy skills are developed in order to thrive in the community at large. Our county was shown to have forty-one percent of adults lacking basic literacy skills in a survey done in two thousand three. By examining the unique challenges of our community, we are better able to serve this issue. It is estimated that by the year two thousand sixty, one in six Americans will be categorized as immigrants or new Americans. Our program is about empowering these individuals and the community, and also about building hope. With that, I turn it over to my tutors for their testimonials on the subject.
So hello, my name is Christopher Anthony Peña, and I've been on this program as a literacy tutor since, I believe, February, so that's around six months, and I have to say, to speak my mind aloud, I think this is one of the best things that I've ever done in my life. It was life-changing for me, it was actually very nice to help a lot of people and to have a lot of people, you know, how do you say, be surrounded by lots of wonderful and supportive people, it's an amazing environment, it is very welcoming, and I believe that this is a very life-changing experience, that it also opened my mind, as well as I opened the minds of learners to also know what they're capable of when it comes to their literacy skills or computer skills. And it also makes me feel what I'm capable, makes me want to like, no, it makes, it let me know what I'm also capable of in the workplace, so I think that there wasn't, I couldn't have done it a better way. I couldn't have started my, how do you say, my work experience in a better way than this one, so I want to thank everyone that I've worked with for all these six months, you guys are the best, and thank you for so much for your support, this is an amazing program.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Brianna Mesa. Before I started working here, I had no idea about the incredible resources our library offers to the community. It's been, it's been a rewarding experience to witness it all and be a part of it, especially in my Department of Literacy, where Chris, Elisa, and I have been able to step out and become a part of something so enriching. It's truly been special to be allowed into the lives of my students. At just nineteen, I've had the unique opportunity to experience the teacher-student connection from both sides. As a student, I have understood it one way, but now, as a teacher, I see how sincere that connection truly is to have. I couldn't be more proud of how far my students have come in these short, quick months that I've been here. There's a saying by Noam Chomsky, a famous American professor of linguistics, that goes, "A language is not just words, it's a culture, a tradition, a unification of community, a whole history that creates what a community is, it's all embodied in a language." This quote resonates deeply with me because it captures the essence of what we do here for literacy. It's not just about teaching words or facts, it's about sharing and building a culture in our community. Seeing my students embrace this makes me feel honored to be a part of their journey, as well as teaching here. And I couldn't be more welcome to thank what you guys offer and what the library offers, thank you.
Thank you so much for letting us know how this program has been for you guys, and with that, I want to present certificates of completion for the number of hours that these tutors have dedicated to the program. So Christopher, if you would please come join me. Brianna and Mark as well, please, so Christopher has completed five hundred hours of literacy tutor volunteering services. Brianna has completed over four hundred hours of literacy tutoring services. And Mark is a very special volunteer here, he is an outstanding individual who has been with us since two thousand ten, preceding a lot of us here. So he is a very notable part of our program, he has completed over four thousand hours. Thank you for your time.
Sure, there's going to be a presentation from the president.
Yes. With, can I read this out loud?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay, so we have something to present to you guys, but I just read it really quickly and I read really fast. And so I just want to share it with the room, it says, "May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you make." So when you guys use this, and hopefully it just doesn't collect dust, but you guys remember and remember where you were right now, remember what you've done, and let this just guide you in your paths going forward if you continue teaching. When you continue learning, because I feel like we revert, you know, we're always both students and teachers, but you made a difference and all your students' lives are gonna remember you, and thank you for everything you've poured into the library, thank you.
But this has been.
Yeah.
Inside the classroom.
Oh, I'll get it.
Might have to squish.
Second round, there you go, for squishing.
Love you, Mark.
Mark and Mark.
I take one just to be sure.
I take eight, that's what I do with my kids.
I don't know how to do that.
Here, Amber, set it up.
Just say you look sick.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's so, I know it's from the ceiling, because I guess.
Okay, let's move on to A two, recognition and scholarship presentation to Imperial Public Library Lunch at the Library interns.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Louvano, I am a literacy coordinator for the Imperial Public Library. I have the privilege tonight of telling you all about our two thousand twenty-four Lunch at the Library program, generously funded by a grant provided by California State Library. The Lunch at the Library grant provides lunch and an educational experience to children that are no longer receiving these services during the summer months. This is our summer team. Jalen, you'll see her first, was our intern supervisor. She's an Imperial High graduate who is currently on her way driving back to Friends College in Kansas. Jalen has been a great role model to all of our teen interns. Next, you'll see our interns, Valeria, Madison, Adiselli, Jose, Brianna, and Ashlyn. Brianna is actually a literacy tutor that graciously assisted often in our program. An excellent orientation was provided by our community partner, Imperial Unified School District. As you can see, Stella Vanessa Diaz, she's a little tiny picture standing up there. Stella Vanessa Diaz in the picture, she's a director of food services and responsible for coordinating delicious meals Monday through Friday during these past nine weeks. Staff from Pacific Southwest joined us for this training and food service certification as well. And we actually have the staff from Pacific Southwest here tonight. Imperial Unified School District supplied up to sixty nutritious meals each day to our library patrons. As I will show you later, the school district also served food twice a week to our outreach locations at Villa Lara and Las Palmeras apartment complexes. Every day, an educational experience was provided, up to fifty attendees. Mondays and Fridays, Unwind and Design Creative Studios came in and taught cooking, candle-making, painting, and macrame classes in addition to the daily art activities given. A vital, a vital element of our grant included sustainability and farm-to-summer education. Lee Davis and Christopher Flores did bee and gardening educational presentations. As you can see, nothing was wasted. We can see that Madison is an excellent worm farmer and composter. Most organic material waste were placed in our worm farm or garden compost bin by our intern team. The library did outreach this year. Pacific Southwest Properties allowed the Imperial Library to visit twice a week to provide lunch and educational activities to two of their USDA complexes, Villa Lara and Las Palmeras. Luz Vallejo and her team worked hard to support the outreach in every way possible. We have made a strong partnership with them this summer. We hope to expand this program next year through our grant, due to residents requesting more outreach days during the week. Project Food Box had a table present most days at the Imperial Public Library. Project Food Box works with Medi-Cal and Sun Terra to provide medically tailored, delivered-to-home produce boxes for people who qualify. Free books for home libraries were given to children every Friday at the library and at each outreach visit. As you can see, it was a great summer. I would now like to pass out our scholarship checks and our certificates. Adiselli Vega Espinoza. Ashlyn Castañeras. Castan, Castañanos. Jose Vega Espinoza. Madison Taylor. And Valeria Guesada. Thank you. And I would love to have the opportunity to have them take pictures with the library board as well. For those in the audience, the interns received fifteen hundred dollars for their internship this summer, and they definitely earned it.
Parents, come on, it's okay. Oh, yes. Yeah. I feel like I'm dizzy. Well, they're so good looking. Congratulations.
For those parents who did not, were not able to get a photo, we will post this on our social media page on the library, so you can get that photo. Or I will provide it to Elizabeth, and she can forward the photos.
And before you guys leave, I just want to say thank you, what you guys did. Lunch at the Library has a really close-to-heart feeling, I think, for all of us, so diminishing that barrier to those families who really need that resource is amazing, so hats off to you, and thank you for assisting us this year.
I, I do not want to put you on the spot, but at this time, there is a really great learning opportunity regarding green waste and composting, so you may want to stick around. No pressure, but it's a really great learning opportunity. I apologize, Yvonne.
That's fine. I'll save it for the record. A three presentation by Yvonne Cordero, City of Imperial Community Development Planner regarding SB thirteen eighty-three statewide mandatory organic waste collection.
Good evening, trustees, and I have the pleasure of presenting to you SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the statewide mandatory organic waste collection mandate. I stumbled upon your meeting last month and heard you all talking about or discussing SB thirteen eighty-three and what we can do in the schools, and reached out to Amber and offered to come and inform you about the mandate.
Thank you.
So we have SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the statewide mandatory organic waste collection. The State of California adopted Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three statewide mandatory organic waste collection in two thousand sixteen as part of California's larger strategy to fight climate change by reducing organic waste disposal by seventy-five percent by two thousand twenty-five. In other words, the state must reduce organic waste disposal by more than twenty million tons annually by two thousand twenty-five. About forty percent of what we discard in landfills is organic waste, and by diverting organic waste from our landfills, we help with the GHG emissions. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, SB thirteen eighty-three established statewide greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. When organic material decomposes in our landfills, it produces methane, a greenhouse gas eighty-four times more potent than carbon dioxide. SB thirteen eighty-three's goal, goal is to reduce the amount of organic waste disposed in landfills by seventy-five percent, as I mentioned, as compared to twenty fourteen levels, and as a rescue for people to eat at least twenty percent of currently disposed surplus food. Landfills are the largest source of methane in California. Organic waste in landfills emit twenty percent of the state's methane and air pollutants like PM2, which contributes to health conditions such as asthma. By composting, composting organic materials and recovering edible food, greenhouse gas production significantly reduces, and we can all contribute to slow climate change and improve health. This slide shows what the responsibility of the city is, every city in California. We are to provide organic collection services to all residents and businesses, which we already do. Everybody has their three containers that we receive collections from Republic Services. We are also required to establish edible food recovery programs, which we have IV Food Bank that does that, and they do an excellent job. We are required to conduct education and outreach to our community. We are also required to procure our purchase recyclable and recovered organic products. We are also required to secure access to recycling edible food recovery capacity and monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. We're doing all those with the help of IV RMA. We've hired a consultant to determine if we have the capacity to store all this organic waste that's being produced by our residents and our businesses, and they have determined that we do have sufficient capacity for this. This is just a picture I included as an example of the waste, the food waste that would go to our landfills. Instead, we are, what we, the bill is trying to do is divert it into an edible food recovery agency such as IV Food Bank. There's another photo. So who does this impact? It impacts everyone, all persons and entities, entities that generate organic materials are impacted. Everyone is required to divert their organic materials from their landfill trash by separating them and placing them in the organics container. In addition, certain entities that provide food will be required to donate any excess food to food recovery organizations such as IV Food Bank. As you can see, IV Food Bank plays a big role in this bill. So what is the city doing? The city ratified ordinance eight twelve on January fifth, two thousand twenty-two to establish the mandatory organic waste disposal program within the city. The city has entered into a joint powers agreement with IV RMA to jointly implement programs and deliver recycling services and education. As a member of the IV RMA TAC Technical Advisory Committee, the city has assisted in purchasing a reporting software to submit regional reports to CalRecycle that will quantify our compliance in progress. We also procured a capacity planning consultant to formulate a regional capacity plan that will estimate edible food recovery capacity and the amount of new or expanded capacity that will be needed for our region. In two thousand twenty-two, the Community Development Department applied for and was awarded approximately thirty thousand in CalRecycle grant funds for education, outreach, and enforcement. With those funds, we purchased two tablets for field inspections and onsite reporting, two desk scanners, safety equipment, and the compost piles and compostable liners that our department has been distributing at city events and at our office. We have formulated a Let's Talk Trash campaign to educate residents of the mandate. The camp, that campaign is being distributed via email to all accounts that have been registered, that have registered email addresses with the city and the city's website and our social media platforms. We have been and will continue to issue courtesy notices educating residents and commercial businesses and eventually start issuing. and eventually start issuing citations for noncompliant residents. It is not the city's intention to issue citations to residents or commercial businesses, but to primarily educate to meet the mandate's goal. Although we will eventually have to issue citations because our jurisdiction will be cited if we don't meet those goals. I included these photos. There's a photo on the left, handing out the composting piles. The middle is an example of what we have posted on social media. And on the right, we have a picture of a field trip we took to Republic Services composting facility where it all goes. And as you can see, there's lots of contamination in the piles. The requirements for this mandate is all residents will have to properly separate the recycling and organics from their garbage and have regular curbside collection services. Commercial entities and education agencies are required to subscribe to the Organics Collection Service, provide organic collection containers, donate excess food, provide educational information to tenants or staff, inspect containers for contamination, and inform employees of any contamination. Certain large businesses categorized as Tier One and Tier Two, such as California Midwinter Fair, they are categorized as Tier Two. Commercial edible food generation must donate the maximum amount of edible food for human consumption that would otherwise be disposed. Multifamily complexes and residents and the property owners or management are required to subscribe to and participate in their jurisdiction Organic Curbside Collection Service for tenants. Management must supply and allow access to adequate number, size, and location of containers with the correct labels and container colors. They must also annually educate tenants to how to, on how to properly sort organic waste into the correct bins and provide information to new tenants within fourteen days of occupation. Part of this bill is for us to do the enforcement. The Code Enforcement Division will determine if violations have occurred and implement enforcement actions and determine if compliance standards are met in accordance to ordinance eight twelve. So you can see in the pictures, the one on the left, that's a compliant container, which has organic waste and paper food products. The middle has yard waste, but also has a lot of plastics, which are considered contaminants. And the one on the right, that was taken from a multifamily complex. It's very difficult for multifamily residents to follow this mandate. Nobody really is monitoring them, and they just don't have the appropriate amount of signage to direct them to how to properly sort their waste. This photo was taken from a local restaurant, and actually, that was the day that CalRecycle came for a visit and wanted to inspect containers. And as you can see, it's a beautiful container with organic waste, with the exception of one towel. We had to dig that out. So as part of the enforcement, we have conducted public education that started January first, 2022, continuing to this day. Businesses were notified beginning March of 2022, and enforcement began September 2023. And that includes visiting the site, speaking to management, and giving them information and inspecting the containers. Residential notification began in March 2022, and enforcement began January 2024. As many of you know and heard, we are out there, five o'clock in the morning, to beat Republic Services before they pick up the organic waste container. And we issue courtesy notices to the residents and hand out flyers with information. The penalties that we will eventually have to issue for noncompliance will be, first violation is a written warning, second, one hundred to two hundred dollars per violation, and the third and subsequent violations will be two hundred and fifty to five hundred per violation. We are not issuing any citations at the moment. We are still giving the public time to become educated and hopefully get them to recycle organic waste. These are just, we have all our information on our website, and CalRecycle has really good information as well, if you'd like to visit that. And I am open for any questions that you may have.
You mentioned that this is gonna be also, it's also gonna be for, for businesses, right?
It is for businesses.
So how is that gonna work? Like, the apartment, also the complex, right, the rental, the apartment complex?
Yes.
How is that gonna work? Because I, like, I rent a space in one of these buildings, and I've seen the trash can, it's only one trash can, it doesn't have no signs. Everybody does everything in one bin. And I have the feeling, I heard somebody saying that it doesn't comply for businesses or apartment complexes.
No, they do. Everybody has to. In the beginning, we went out and visited businesses, and if we saw that they don't generate organic waste, they were issued a waiver, which exempted them from, from, from recycling organic waste. In your, in your situation, you are part of a shopping center, what is considered a shopping center with one account. And if there's a restaurant or any business that generates organic waste, then you would have a green card.
Okay. Just asking, because I haven't seen it. Thank you.
I have a question. For places like McDonald's and Starbucks, they're known to have, like, tight limits on their food and everything. Is that being collected now, and they're not allowed to throw away, like, their food?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We, through IVRMA, we also hired a consultant, Recreate, that went to all the edible food generators and instructed them and gave them the information. We also do onsite visits, make sure they have all their trash cans labeled and that they're disposing of their waste properly.
I forgot to ask you, what about country properties? A lot of people here live in the country, and they have those big, those big bins. They don't have the three that we have in the city?
So typically, they're, they belong in the county's jurisdiction. They're not, they're not within the city's jurisdiction, but they should have all three containers. The county is a little behind on this mandate. Enforcing this mandate, so they're working on it.
Thank you.
No questions on schools? I know that was a big issue last time.
You know, we actually did talk about that in the last one. So how does that?
We appreciate your comment.
Yeah, the, the schools, I mean, what is there for instilling it, since they're there, to bring it home? Or how does that work?
So the requirement is just to have the containers available, which they, we visited them, and they subscribe to the, to the service. We are not allowed to go in and monitor. However, they provided us with a policy, Imperial School District has provided us with a policy, which they have shared tables. And any leftover food is put on the table, and students, families, teachers, everybody at school knows that they can take from that table.
That's great. It's definitely a start.
Yes.
I remember seeing those last year when I visited some schools. They, I was calling it a community table, but I liked that shared table, and they do. I don't know what happens after the food, you know, when school's over and if there's anything left over. But it is a start, and for anyone that does need it, you know, it will, again, eliminate those barriers to those that actually really have the need. And maybe it's a step to make it easier for those families to have food at home that really, really need it.
Yes, according to the representative at the school district, the tables are empty by the end of the day.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I talked to Sarah at the Food Bank, and she had said that it's one in three kids that has, I don't know what the correct term is.
Food insecurities.
Food insecurities, exactly. So I'm glad. That makes me feel a lot better, that it's gonna help. Any other comments or questions?
Just for anyone that is, that is listening to this meeting, they don't have their compost box. Where can they go and pick it up?
We typically hand them out at city events or at our office at four hundred South Imperial Avenue. I've also brought a few with me, if anyone is interested. We also supply them with our compostable liners, just to make things cleaner.
And before I forget, I'm taking one of those boxes with me today.
Okay, great.
But we hear so many different things. I live in a community that I know, two hundred of my neighbors, and we all hear different things. So one of the things is, some people say that you guys are requiring food to be in the refrigerator, or can they just go ahead and put it in a compox box?
No, it's not required to put in the refrigerator. It makes, it slows down the decomposition of the food, so it won't sit in the heat, in the sun, rotting for a week. The suggestion is to pour baking soda to keep it cleaner and put in the refrigerator to slow down the process. But it's not a requirement. It's up to you.
So they can just put it in the garage and then just throw it in there?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
For the compostable liners, is that a regular trash bag? Is it specific, like, how?
No, it's made of materials that decompose easily, and I've provided some samples for you in the, in the composting.
I know, it's one thing that I'm just like, ooh, I don't have to touch it. I mean, because we know, you know, when food starts to go bad, if you will, it's not fun. Unless you're a little kid that...
It's juicy. It's not fun, yes.
Unless you're a worm.
Unless you're a worm, then you love it, or a caterpillar or something, you know, but yeah.
I think one of the questions last week, too, was, do you have any of the bins left?
Yes, I brought about seven of them.
I will take one.
Yeah. Show one, or just pay some matches?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's so cute. Yeah, it's not an ice war. It was...
This is what we hand out. We hand out the composting bucket, one of the compostable bags. They're made of a funny plastic. And then we just hand out the information that...
And where can we get more bags when we run out of those bags?
You can purchase them. I hear Walmart has compostable bags. They have to be compostable, not biodegradable.
Okay.
Some biodegradable products contain fuels that are not good for the composting product. And Amazon, this is where we purchase these, Amazon.
Good to know.
Thank you so much, Yvonne, for taking the time and coming and explaining all this. It is a little confusing out there.
It is.
Everybody's very confused.
It is, and that's why we're allowing the public time to become educated and not issuing citations. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for watching our meeting, too. It was a long one last time.
Well, not, not just that. I think I called over to her department the next day, and she was already halfway through the meeting. On top of it, that night and the next morning.
Thank you so much.
Well, we are a library. Knowledge is power.
Right?
Thank you. All right, so let's move on. If anyone has any other questions, we'll go on to Consent Agenda. B one, approval of minutes for the regular library board meeting of July ninth, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve.
And I second that?
Okay, motion and a second by Ms. Sotomayor Santos.
Sotomayor Santos.
Oh, my goodness, and Mrs. Estes, Ms. Estes. All righty.
So I'll take roll call?
Yes.
So we have, excuse me. President Hernandez?
Present.
Yes.
Here, yes. Sorry, my brain.
Vice President Estes?
Yes.
Trustee Altamorano?
Yes.
Trustee Banda? Oh, sorry, absent. Trustee Sotomayor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to item C. Work session discussion slash recommendation. So we'll start with C one, library calendar of events. Presenter Amber Haller, library administrator.
I, so I put together a very, very simple calendar for you, so that can be used somewhat as a guide rather than providing, because it's teamwork with all the staff and team, and leadership with our city attorney, city council, and our library board of trustees. So there are very many special events out, you know, events out there identifying some true health issues that need to be, you know, recognized. There's some fun things out there to recognize. So I focused on, put the most focus on ALA-related recognitions for celebrations and outreach. And then I kept it to the amount that was on the calendar, the calendar that I had, because you can't do everything. And so, and of course, if there's something that you, you know, identify, you know, within those months, this isn't saying that we're celebrating everything here, but it's something to help guide us, as if we went into a workshop and planned out the, the year. It would be something that could guide us and say, oh, okay, we, you know, we have these, August, August twenty-sixth is Women's Equality Day. So you'll see that each of you received a bookmark for Women's History Month. So that's something that we do have at the library. And, and then library sign, card signup month. You'll see in the report that we will be providing new, four new library cards identified for different populations in our, in our community, for our patrons. So I just wanted to provide this information to you, just in case you wanted to make any comments, or you can put it on the side and take a look at it later. I don't have any further information to provide you. I just wanted to provide this to you. You'll notice the orange, I didn't have time to make a, a, what is, what is?
The note?
Yeah, the little notes on the, on the side. This is what's difficult when I write this, my, my minutes is listening to me, forget words and say, ah. But every second Tuesday is orange because that is a meeting. Those items, those, the, the dates that are in pink, those are holidays. I didn't, I did not identify the holidays, because it's, you know, you can, pretty much, you can recognize that what the dates are. And then the blue are actual celebrations that the library world celebrates. And the items that are outlined in red are celebration holidays, not, not actual government holidays where we take the day off. And then there are three areas that are identified in purple out of the year, and those are conferences for this year for library services. And I'll stand for any questions, recommendations, comments?
I just have one comment. What program do you use to do this? Because this is really neat.
Oh, you're so sweet. I wish it was better. It was very difficult not to download anything online. That's a big no-no here. I actually found this on Canva.
Oh.
So I searched and searched on Excel, on, on Word, but I finally found this one on, on Canva.
Canva is my best friend.
Yeah.
I know that you say we're not going to celebrate any of these special months.
No, 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 I'm not, not, but it's...
No, no, no. But I'm just saying, but are you, like, like, for me, it's very interesting, the National Doc Month. Like, if you have one, you can do something fun with that. And the National Wellness Month, too. I don't know if you can do something with that. I mean, those are like, and the book lovers, well, we already passed that one. But the Women Equality Day, I think, is very important, that we do something about us. You know, we're having a picture on the fifteenth.
Definitely. Yes, and, and I misworded by saying we're not going to... Definitely, yes, and, and I'm mis- um, worded um, by saying we're not going to celebrate everything here. Um, these are some ideas um, for kind of a brainstorming page. And even if we don't do anything like a large, you know, large event at the library. Our staff does um, put out books, book displays, bookmarks. Uh, we do identify um, different um, events throughout the year. And so, um, this will just help us um, a little bit to see what's happening in the, in the library world. Um, to see if there's something that we wanna gear towards.
This is great. I love to see it all laid out and I'm a visual person. The one comment, I'm just like, remember, we're a full women board. That would be fun. That would be great.
I think in the library, you have most is women too, right?
Yes, we have one, one, one male and um, one male volunteer. We had two male volunteers.
That's, I mean, it might be history, you know? Dennis, our VIP.
In that case, then I would say that if most um, the library staff and everybody here can make it to the Seroptimist a hundred and four year. Pictures that maybe we can have the picture, we can make time to take a picture of us all there. It's this Thursday, the fifteenth at six P M. At the amphitheater at the food bank, so. If we can make it all out, we can probably try and sneak in a picture.
And we're white.
White, cream, beige, whatever.
It has white in it.
I will, I will um, notify trustee Banda and then the staff as well.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you. And I've been liking the co- liking everything on, online, but can you remind me of the date?
Uh, the fifteenth, this, this Thursday, so that's forever. Yeah, that's for pretty much everybody in the entire valley, so I don't know, maybe it'll be a good big turnout. Maybe there'll just be less than eighty, but either way. We made the effort.
It's always nice, it's always nice. And then we, we do have as well, um, I believe, I thought it was. March is Natural Women's History Month.
Yeah, actually, yeah, uh, my work we're doing, we're recognizing um, Hispanic Heritage Month. And so it's been, I might, I might be in here looking up things, but um, it's been interesting. Cause sometimes we, we forget a little bit of our culture, cause it's just an everyday thing. So it's been fun to tap back in and be like, oh, yeah. That's our roots. It's not just, yeah. So um, even with I see Filipino American History Month and. Um, I know AAPI is in April, um, so it's just, I think it sparks that conversation or like. Uh, connection back to your culture. So I think we should tap into some of the, I think it's a social media post, you know, start the conversation. Um, but I love that. We're doing such a good job on social media, so I'm like, yes. The graphics, it's so aesthetic. I love it, yeah.
It was um, on Book Lovers Day, I, I asked, I said, did you have anything for Book Lovers Day? And she goes, no, but I can put something together. She put four together and posted them, so it was amazing. Um, so A I, AAPI?
Asian.
A line and I think I, um, there were so many library. Yeah, all of this was library for April.
And I love also in April, El Dia de los Niños, Las Libros, I think, I mean. Great. I didn't even know that was a thing.
It's library related.
Yeah, that's amazing.
See funding for that.
Count us in for.
I was thinking Election Day. I like that Election Day. Maybe we can have the kids comment vote.
Encouraging.
Things on the stickers.
Uh, one thing I did add, um, it doesn't have anything to do with um, now, because September, uh, you'll see that. Um, it is, oh, I'm looking at the wrong month. Uh, it is. Oh, National Preparedness Month. Um, but I did add heat ill- illness prevention for June. Uh, to ensure that we have a program. Um, our, our H R obviously does provide that for all staff. But um, as a, with the communication from our trustees, um, it does identify that. Our library serves as a cooling center and our, we should be readily available to identify. You know, signs of heat illness, which we're trained to do, but it's also nice to be able to provide that pro- um, opportunity to. Provide the um, education to our, our, our patrons. And um, have s- um, have the resources for them as well. So I'm taking a look at our um, our first aid kit to make sure that we have. You know, adequate things to respond with, so.
And even like with waters and all that, you know, if we have opportunity to get ready for that, but if we're a cooling center, you know. There's, there's pain points, you know, let's see how we can get those things addressed.
We do have a water fountain in this um, schedule, um, I mean, in the budget, uh, that is a refill station for a bottle. So um, that's something that we'd like to move, you know, um, we look forward to being able to provide, um, where more people are. Being sustainable, bringing in their water bottles and, you know, maybe in the future, we might get a donation of water bottles we can provide. To those who uh, may not have the money to afford those that come into, for the air conditioning and to cool off.
Only that, just in general, to promote hydration is very important, especially this year, it's been a very hard summer. And I know at least ten people that have told me, I get DC or my husband get DC and. The minute you mention it came to your hydration, they don't believe it and they go to the doctor and they're like, yep, they're not drinking enough water.
Writing things down. Brain is going. Um, be- before I misspoke on the month for um, AAPI month. It is in May and you did write it down, so. And I just wanted to like, make sure that, like, it is May, not April, sorry. Um, and it's already there, so. A lot of great opportunities, um, maybe not necessarily, I mean, it depends, right? Well, what the schedule looks like in the library. Um, but maybe encouraging people to sign up to vote, you know? We'll figure out the ins and outs and I'm more than happy to work with you and brainstorm, but um, there's so much opportunity for creativity with these events. So I'm excited to see what, what we come up with. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for doing this.
And I'm always available if any, uh, any of you or um, two of you. That okay? Um, I think comes in and would like to discuss any of these um, opportunities.
Thank you. So we'll move on um, to C two, September Library Celebration, trustee Ivan Sotomayor.
Okay, this is where we probably go a little bit deeper. Schedule, so uh, as, well, some of you know that I'm very big on doing calendars, cause this is another calendar I have. Keep track of everything. Um, so a couple of things that I saw and one of them, I just, uh, first one was just for the library. And maybe for the city itself, um, on September twenty first, it's Red Panda Day. And I know we do movies in the park and stuff, but there's that movie Turning Red. So I was wondering if, you know, we could do something. Uh, with that Disney movie on Red Panda Day. Um, just, you know, for the kids, it's something fun and, you know, that came up. So I figured, you know, just put it out there in case anybody was in.
When is that day?
Uh, September twenty, twenty first, I believe.
And that is Saturday, it's a Saturday.
So um, if I. Yeah, like the day before, cause I know it's a weekend, but we could say in honor of, I don't know, uh, the day before, like Red Panda Day, just. Make it fun, cause I, I, I love the movies that the city does. It's great, so. Turning Red, yeah, it's a Disney movie Pixar, so.
Can I ask about what is a Red Panda Day?
It's not, it's just world, it's, yeah, it's a worldwide thing, so.
Uh, do you have a recommendation on the twenty first or the twentieth, uh, and time of day? Because we do have um, rights to show movies inside. Yeah, cause we, we have to pay a decent amount for the movies in the park when it's being shown to everyone, but you have the ability. And so I would recommend if you're gonna do it, do it during office hours on a day that.
Yeah, Friday is perfect, cause that's for the kids.
Yeah, like, you know, and you have from the library, maybe if you have any wildlife or Red Panda books and then just. Oh, hey, here it is.
The crafts, oh my goodness, oh my goodness. No, 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 I'm saying crafts, you know, they, they can, uh, the, the kids love the glue and the little shapes and you can make little activities.
Like, you know, like the paper plates and.
Oh my gosh, that is.
It's just something fun. And then um, there were different days that I saw in September that um, I thought would be. If it's not on the library schedule, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure you guys already probably looked at it, but. I know that on September fourth is National Wildlife Day and, you know, something fun, you know, during the day for the uh, September fourth. Yeah, and you know, kids come in and maybe, you know, look at wildlife books and everything and it'd be really cute. We also have, sorry, I'm going through, I'm trying to do this alphabetically, cause there's stuff here that. Um, the particular one that I was looking at, it's really important to not just the library, but other, I know service clubs here in the Imperial Valley. Is a U N World Literacy Day, which is lands on a Sunday, but it could be celebrated on a Monday, but that's a really important one. For some of us and I would love to see like if some kind of project or something can be um, open that even. Probably uh, members from other service organizations can come in and, you know, highlight that with the library.
Definitely. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if um, since this is next month, if it would be appropriate to form another ad hoc? I think ever anytime you need additional assistance or guidance, I think that's a smart idea. Even if you only meet once, it's fine, or just do a phone call. Sounds good. Um, because we do have World Literacy Day and we did talk about that and talked about how the day expanded to three days. Identified as three days um, online, so um. Definitely would love to um, meet with an ad hoc committee to um, meet your expectations.
I will be part of the Red Panda. Anyone else wanna join me? Red Panda Day.
You guys can do everything by phone or Zoom too. You don't have to.
We're all gonna be pandas with red faces that day.
Did you want Literacy Day too?
We can only do two people per group.
Yeah, but one is on Literacy Day and then me and Magdalena are gonna do Red Panda.
Let me hear that one more time. World Literacy Day?
World Literacy Day will be Vice President Estes and um, trustee Sotomayor. And Red Panda Day will be uh, myself and trustee Altamirano.
Alright, um, next one, I know, I'm just full of ideas. Um, one that I had seen that I thought would be cute, maybe project for the library is you have a National Teddy Bear Day, which is um, on the nineteenth. Um, it's always, I think, interesting to see the history of teddy bears and stuff, so I think it's so- something cute for the kids to understand, like the history of it. And the next one, what's up?
I was gonna say, with that, we have somebody who gives teddy bears away for the kids. Maybe we can collect teddy bears for her campaign. She give them away to kids that be taking care of their homes. So maybe we can talk to her.
It's she's um, there, there's someone that donates teddy bear, so uh, maybe we can put her in communication with you.
Is, is there a specific um, service that she goes towards um, for the teddy bears or?
So I'm not too sure if there's a specific project. Um, I do know that uh, I, we participated in some backpack drives. This past weekend and with the backpack, she was also giving away um, teddy bears to the kids that needed, you know, so um.
She gives and then she collects also.
We can figure out the logistics of that.
It's a nonprofit.
The next one is uh, I believe it's Constitution Week, which is from the seventeen to the twenty third. Um, you know, can never have enough of that for the kids.
Wait, is this in October?
Thank you for making the list and make my day easier today.
And um, so I thought that would be, eh, eh, really cool for the library. Like I said, I know, it just depends on the staff's uh, schedule. But these are just things that had popped up. Um, the other one was um. Like I said, I don't wanna impose or anything, but National um, Ice Cream Cone Day is on this twenty second. Twenty second. And then um, so I got that. And then one that I would like to um, offer up another ser- service organization to help you. The library with, we can participate or put something on um, with the library is, it's two days, actually, it's National Comic Book Day. And Open the Magic Day, which was with books and.
That I am.
I'm on board now.
And that one's on the twenty, that I believe is on the twenty fifth, which is on a Wednesday. So I guess the idea would be, you know, encouraging kids to come dressed up as.
Maybe superheroes.
Oh, they would love it.
I don't know, maybe.
Mentioned superheroes and Harry Potter, right?
And we would be.
Okay.
Willing to, you know, come in and help with that and organize it. I think it would be a fun thing and maybe um. Work with, with uh, with the service organizations, maybe to bring in, I don't know, a magician or maybe somebody that. Some- something fun with the whole event.
President Estes, come on, you bring the magic.
Yes, yes.
So they would, it would be fun, you know, just to do something like that and that might, I'm hoping that draws out even more kids and young adults to attend. It's just something fun.
We can do for those special days, I think we should make a flyer and take it to the schools or email it directly to the schools to let them know this is going on. And promote it into the schools.
I have seen with the school district in Imperial, which I can only speak of, you know, because that's where my daughter goes, but. Um, they've been really good at sending out flyers um, to all parents, like through their email blast. So there's a good opportunity if we have that connection.
Only that, now they have Facebook pages. Most of the schools I follow, Ben Holt's High School, I think, no, Ben Holt's and. T L Wagner and the new one, they all have Facebook pages now.
Oh, okay.
We typically, um, what we'll do, what we do is we reach out to the principal and um, provide them the information. And sometimes we um, are fortunate enough that they'll put it on their um.
Marquee.
Marquee. And um, so just depending on who we're doing our outreach for. So uh, we'll, we'll continue doing that and working with the, we actually are communicating with the high school principal right now. I'm setting up a meeting for our, um, some teen programs. So um, that is our goal to connect with each school district. And get um, further down the line, I'd like for at least every child to have a library card. Before the third grade, which is one goal. It's, that's not something I came up with. I, I want kindergarten, but. Third grade is a um, a national.
So it's Literacy Month, right? This month of September, right? What about the, I mean, the schools gonna start in next week, right? What about we just ask them if we can just go, like, I do this for another school, just for um, for professional day. Why we don't do a library day with one of the schools, each school every week? And I'm willing to do it. Like, I'm willing to go in there and talk to them about. These events that we're gonna have, have it together, give it to the kids, that way they can take it home. Um, I'm willing to go in there, like, any of you wanna do it with me? Like, take a day during the week and go talk to every school. And maybe we can do, maybe. And maybe we can do maybe first grade to fifth grade. And then at least elementary, cause this is the most important ones.
Um, what we'll do is we'll connect with the principals and see what, how they receive that information and. And maybe, hopefully they'll do that now, but if it doesn't, maybe it'll open the door. For um future, they they can identify some dates for us that we can um work with them, I know we had three staff that attended. A an event um at, I believe it was. Teal Wagner uh to provide information about library services, um so we're really um happy that we were invited. And they they said they had a great turnout, so I think that's probably something you were talking about, going and speaking.
Yeah, usually for a couple, like I have, I think it's um. Probably and another little time they asked me to go there for um Professional Day. And I honestly go like six different classes in five hours. In this one will be fun, this one will be easy, it's gonna take five, ten minutes with the kids and they're gonna love getting the information. That's a lot better than the professional day, that's.
I have a proposal, an idea, if, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it might be great, if we can um. Cause when you sign up for your library card, there's a form you fill out, right, it's not like we can just hand out a library card to the kids, cause they need, we need some information. Um, if we can send that form to them or say, give them the printouts and then, you know, maybe they'll come turn it back in and we can just. We gave it to you or, you know, offering you the service, just bring back the form and get your library card, or we can go collect them and then. I don't know, but just make it so like, hey, I have a library card now.
I'm not sure if the school districts still, I remember when I had children in school, every year we had that packet that we had to complete. And it was the same information, I'm not sure if if they do that any longer.
I don't, so my daughter's going in third grade, I filled it out maybe in Kinder or first, I don't remember and. It just kind of, you don't need to do it unless you're a new student or going to, I'm guessing like the middle school or the high school um. But I mean, it's something, maybe like it's the first week of school, you know, they get a whole bunch of other papers, like sign off on the classroom rules and and. Perfect timing, cause school's about to start, so if it's something that they're willing to. Hand out in addition to the other stack of papers, uh we might be able to get some more students with library cards.
Sounds great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, additions?
I have one more date and then I promise I'm done. This is the most important one for most of us here, it's uh National Coffee Day, which is. I know that one is probably near near to all of our hearts. But it'd be fun, you know, to do something uh with the library, I mean, wi- within National Coffee Day, just I don't know, turn it. Something fun with the library, turn it into coffee and books or something like that.
That's how you could give your college and high school students.
Remind, because I, that broke my heart to remove that from my short calendar.
That was on the twenty-ninth, but we could probably celebrate it like on the twenty-seventh. So, cause the twenty-ninth is sun- or Monday, yeah, the thirtieth, the thirtieth, so.
Dennis, is that when the the police department typically does coffee with the cop?
They ha- they haven't been doing that.
Well, we can do it the same day, we can have police department.
Let's have police read books to the kids and drink coffee.
The kids will be back at school and I don't know if parents want their kids drinking coffee in the afternoon, um at least not on a Sunday. Or Monday. It is a good opportunity and there is, um, I know of a business, a small business has a mobile coffee bar, so we can definitely, I mean. With your blessing, Dennis, of what area you want them to be stationed at, um but that opens up the opportunity to conversate with our officers.
Will be good for the police officers to come in the same day.
Even the council, if they're, you know, having opened up that conversation, make sure.
Just saying, do you want coffee, maybe some donuts in there? Coffee with the community and books.
It it, this is um kind of funny, um so people are allowed to bring in water, um so if water spills, you can wipe that up. Um, I've heard the um state librarian make a statement that he said that. I think it was the state librarian, I'll just say I heard someone. In the um library world state that we don't allow people to bring in food or drinks. With our books, but what do you think they're doing when they're at home with the books? But it comes down more to about having to clean up the um the carpet and the furnishings.
What what if we set blankets out on?
We have a community room, we have a.
And the community, I mean, I'm just saying, like, you can have some people outside.
And then, I mean, people bring their own cups.
And we did have lunch at the library, so we, I mean, there is an area that we have had food, but.
So, so what I'm hearing is um, we'll probably sit down with the two um ad hoc committees. And identify a few of these activities and break it down um. Um at a later later date, so you guys can um um move on to.
So those are the only ones, so like I said, I'm done.
That's just September.
She was gonna be a good board member.
Oh my goodness, you know what?
I would just add ver- very quickly, the uh, I am, I hear lots of good ideas. Uh but Em- Amber and her staff have full-time jobs. And so we need, I I think we need to be mindful of that and I think that's where the ad hoc would be. Kind of uh maximize our resources.
Definitely, yeah, so that's why, it's like, it's just pointing them out, but you know, not having to do it all, but I know there's like one or two that. Would be really good and if the ad hoc committees can help with that or provide a resource where it doesn't. Take up the time of your employees, I mean. I guess, but yeah, can we just please do the coffee one?
We'll cancel the rest, we'll we'll, you know, go down to one, so no Red Panda, no ice cream, but coffee, absolutely.
Or we can just meet Sunday somewhere.
Oh my goodness, alright, so yes, thank you so much and the library's gonna be buzzing. The keywords, um okay, so let's go on to item C three Gilmore Gilmore Girls Day Library Event. By Vice President Valentina Estes.
You just made my day, cause I noticed in October you have Friends of the Library Week from the twenty to the twenty-sixth. So we have identify a day for the Gilmore Girl Days, which will be Wednesday, the twenty-third. And Yvonne and I went over um more than one idea. So basically, the the what we're looking into, we're gonna convert the teenagers room into Luke's Cafe. If you guys are familiar with the Gilmore Girls, so it'll be Luke's Cafe. On the old area, I call it the left side of the library where all the old um stands are, there will be the library. I start hollow. And then in the community room, they have the Chinese food slash pizza place, supposed to be a pizza place, but it's actually Chinese food. So we're thinking convert that into Chinese, um we are still gonna work, Yvonne is helping me to work. We don't know and I didn't have time today to go count, how many stations do we have in the park to read?
Oh, there's eighteen.
Okay, so Yvonne and I are gonna put together, actually, I think you referenced a book, um where we can. Post the the story of the Gilmore Girls on those eighteen things. And then since we can, we decided that we're gonna have all the vendors that we wanted. So we're gonna have only maybe one or two vendors on the outside of the library, we're not gonna go past the outside of the library. We're gonna stay just right there on the green areas that we have, we have two green areas and I gotta talk to the Hula Hoo lady. To see if she can donate her time to do Hula Hoes and then I think. Um, I'm talking to a couple of the nonprofit, see if they can bring like fairy outfits. Just to convert the little girls into fairies uh before they go inside. That's so far rough, that's what we have and we're trying to see we can find. We haven't decided we're gonna, I wanted to do like a cold. On Facebook saying that we're looking for a Gilmore Girl look-alikes. Maybe, you know, get together and decide who's gonna be Gilmore Girls and we think we find a perfect look, we just have to ask him.
And you mentioned, I I heard twenty-third, is that the date that you? Twenty-third, so Wednesday?
And it goes perfectly with your Friends of the Library.
Yes, okay.
So that's October?
And the timeframe that you're um are.
That was, I was gonna ask you about that, because I know the kids are gonna be at school, they get out at what, two o'clock, the little ones? Two or three, you have a little one.
Um, like, three, like three, I think they're out. I'm not gonna lie, she hasn't gone back to school and I pick her up from Arc, so I don't even know what time dismissal is.
Well, we can meet more.
The dates and we definitely gonna have a a team of people helping, we're not gonna dump this on the library staff. I mean, if they can help, that'd be great, but we definitely have a list, I know I can pull at least twenty, fifty people, they will come and help.
Look forward to um discussing this with you. Thank you.
Thank you for the update, um item C four Garden to Table Fundraising Event, Trustee Ivan Sotomayor.
So um this one, I know that uh Sir Optimus is gonna be uh helping uh. Help put this on for um the library, I know that we earmarked the twenty-third of April. For that, so um I'm, we're ju- we just need to finalize, obviously with uh the chef. He's from um Ursa Hospitality, I don't know if you uh heard of him, they just opened a restaurant? Him, so we'll be uh reaching out um with him, contacting him and then, you know, maybe uh. Working like a three or four course meal, um I think the goal would probably be selling tickets at a hundred and twenty. So because it's a four course meal and then um possibly including uh drinks, like obviously we'll come up with a budget and everything for that. With a goal of, you know, at least getting ten thousand um and through that event to support the library, but. Use the library to its full capacity as in um. Some, we can pick some of the plants that, I mean, the vegetables uh from the vegetable garden, obviously, it's not gonna. For everybody, but at least we can have that as inspiration. And then um obviously, it would probably be in the evening, we just need to figure out logistics of where it would be, if it would be. Um, I don't know if we'd be able to close a small little street right here in front.
Ninth Street.
Front um of the library and uh. I I don't, I don't know what else exactly, it just depends on what weather is gonna look like that day. Um, but like I said, the goal would be that and then uh brainstorm how it would be, like perhaps with the old books that you're. Looking to get rid of, um make an incentive where people actually take them home and let's say. Adopt a book for a hundred dollars and that hundred dollars goes straight to you, um well not you, but the library itself. So to get that funding in, so why waste? An old book is still a good book, so um if we can put that to use and that way, it's kinda in a way encouraging a little bit of recycling, but at the same time. Instead of getting rid of it and, you know, get some value out of it for the library, so that would be the thing, it's still a work in process, I know it would be. Uh several months away right now, but you know, we keep working at it and then we'll have everything for you and then sit down with um yourself and. Uh you Dennis, to figure out what permits and everything we're gonna need uh to put this event on and make sure that we're in compliance. Uh with everything, like in food handling, um obviously, a uh. Uh, what is it, uh determine who's gonna be the one to uh get, let's say, the liquor license and everything, cause I know that. Usually that is the thing that generates a lot of the revenue for it, so.
So um with that, with the liquor, the ABC license, um it that would be through the nonprofit, I I'm assuming. Sir Optimus would be able to.
Yes, we can, we can certainly obtain, but if the city wants to take that over or if the city is willing to, then it could certainly stick with you and we could just say. Two, three, two drinks are maybe provided with the meal, cause I know a hundred and twenty, I know is a lot, but I know that people are a lot more comfortable when they. Feel that they get a more complete package. Out of it, so and then the rest that they can purchase, so I don't know, I leave that um up to you, how you wanna handle that, cause the. Nonprofit can take it over, but um if the city wants that extra revenue, then it should go to the city.
Yeah, well, I think a lot to talk about, I I don't pay attention. To this street as to what, if it's, it's one thing to drive on it. Or walk across, I don't, I'm not sure how it is for tables and chairs and all of that, so.
And that way, that way it gives us time to see if we can't do it there, if it's too uneven, then let's identify another uh space that we can use. I mean, obviously, I would love it in the library, but it's not big enough and I don't want someone go, oh, like my hands on a book, so.
How big is our front yard? Would it be able to fit tables?
I I would, I would say that we um, the two members that are on the the ad hoc. Um, committee, uh maybe come one day and we can walk and identify a space, I think that would be. Much more effective than, um you know, trying to guess, just all different places, we can have like a um, you know. A a good weather space and then a backup space. Um because all our, all our furnishings, um they do, they are mobile, so we can push um things out and we could. Open up the whole middle of the library and put tables if there was rain or anything like that. So um we definitely can and go through all the um requirements um that that's um. Needed to be done in order to accomplish.
And then from there, we'll make sure that we draft some kind of outline of the areas that we identified for it and then I believe that we should, we'll just cut it off at a hundred. Uh, cause usually these things, I know they'll fill up really, really quick and especially if they find out, it's a, it's a dinner like that, a lot of people are gonna want in, but we want. To make sure that um for sure, are sold out for you and I think anymore, it would be just a little too much.
And I think um uh I think a great idea would be to get with the chef, I don't recall his name, um he wonderful person. Um, to see if there's any, any vegetables that he likes really working with. Um, and maybe we can grow, you know, we can identify those vegetables to grow in our, in our garden. So um we can work along with him on um, you know, of course, not everything's gonna come from the garden, but at least we're growing. Those items that he identifies.
And that way you, the, I guess the, once we have that all done, then the library can start putting out, you know. Save the dates and everything and I I guess the community, I think, will get excited over it.
Oh, it's always fun, it's it's always fun.
I know those events always sell out and it'd be really, really, you know, need to see how it's gonna benefit the library, so.
Can we have um um silent bid?
Silent auctions?
My husband rep- represents me well. Ends up making deals with the other person.
We'll make sure that once we have that, then we'll identify, you know, what what it is, you know. We would like and that way we can make sure that we get the best and highest value that we can for these things to go to a really good cost, so.
I think it'll be a a very fun event. And I'll I'll work towards getting um the master calendar of the the City of Imperial as well, so um. We do have, I mean, the twenty-third is identified, but I'll make sure that there's no um. April is right around the time that they do their um color run, so I'll I'll check on that.
That's on a Saturday, the day, Thursday.
Are we doing, looking at Friday?
The dinner looks like it's on a Wednesday.
The other calendar you might wanna look at is the IV Regional Chamber of Commerce.
I actually did.
Well, they can always walk out and join us. Um, I'm like trying to look really quick, I don't think I have anything in April, so who am I kidding? My uh, up to November, it's already starting to get full, so I was, you know, you just never know. Alright, any other comments, questions, additions?
Okay, so we'll move on to uh item C reports, uh C one staff report. Um, I provided you a very in-depth um report, uh so I will go over it quickly. Um, one is informational, um just in case it's it's. Um, so I started off with funding opportunities, since we've been talking um about funding. And um as you're aware, we already applied for the Zip Books um Grant to be um rewarded, awarded that. And um, as you're aware, we already applied for the Zip Books um, grant to be um, uh, rewarded, awarded that. Um, and so for the month of August, we are waiting to find out how, how much money funds um, we're awarded. The one item I wanted to mention to um, and this can be with the um, ad hoc committee um, on the fundraising part, is there is a grant that's due in two days. I was told it takes about a day to complete it. And it's um, pretty um, a great opportunity to um, receive, be able to get the grant. However, it does um, require five oh one C three to apply. So uh, if that interests you, um, we can meet at a later point. Um, because I, I have a lot of grants like set up, ready to go. And so we, you know, we can um, connect on that if you'd like. And then um, just going down the line, there, there, we're working um, working on the grants for, one is due the twenty first, which is the um, grant that we spoke about at the last meeting to provide um, sustainable programming for adults, their families. And adults ages sixty and older. And then uh, Dennis shared an opportunity for a grant um, for, through the Institute of Museum and Library Services for the National Leadership Grant. This looks like it may be a little bit more competitive, um, more universities were um, receiving the grants um, than smaller libraries. But um, all they're, all they're requiring right now is a two-page proposal. It's due September twentieth. Um, so um, I'll get that written up and submitted and, and just keep working on our grant skills. And um, I'm gonna skip over some of these because we've already talked about them with the um, funding. The state reports, just so you're, you're aware of um, how we were talking about staff time. Um, I, um, this is the time that a lot of staff reports to the state are coming up that I'll be working on in addition to the events and and everyday, everyday business. Um, so with our summer programming, we need, we provide all the statistics um, to the state. And so the deadline for that is Octo- October second, so uh, that is open right now and I, I'm co- collecting all the statistics of all the amazing programs that, that were provided. And then our um, annual grant that we provide to the state library of about every how, how much library space we have, how many users we've had, how many books we've checked out, every little detail. That is due by um, August thirty first. And so that is being opened up and um, um, I'm attending a, a webinar on the twenty ninth. Because they always like to change a few things every year to um, make sure that you're paying attention. And then um, just an update, the library facility, our new public light computer station is set up. They are um, still working on the um, services, the um, uh, they're going from and excuse me for not knowing the language, Louise, I apologize, I'm embarrassed. I know we're going to the cloud. Is that all I need to say? So we're, we're working on that, so um, the computers are set up and ready to go, but we're, we're um, working on the to- transition. I say we, uh, IT is working on this. Uh, the Library Services Center, we've, I've talked, you've been um, provided a lot of information on that already. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more information um, about the funding. We're getting a lot of um, more interest in the literacy services. I, I, as you saw with the presentation today, I mean, I mean, it just grabs your heart when you hear um, them speak. So um, getting a lot of interest and we, um, the WEX volunteers that we recognized um, that Christopher, he's completed his five hundred hours, so he's finished with his um, volunteer program, so we no longer have him as a volunteer. But we have three volunteers right now. Um, one is ready to start and two are being processed through um, the City of Imperial, so we're getting a great interest of volunteers. And uh, it, it truly is amazing when you um, see the um, groups of people um, learning and communicating with um, the tutors, uh, they're, they're, they're fun. Um, and I, we keep saying we need to take them to the garden and create some programming. With that, with the literacy services, I'm very excited that um, the city manager signed off um, and is allowing the literacy coordinator and myself to attend the Pro Literacy Conference, which is in October. Uh, this is geared, it's all literacy for adults. And that's one resource, it's that it's kind of difficult to find at other library conferences. Um, you, you find all the fun things at the li- you know, library conferences, but this is very specific to literacy. So this is going to expose us to a lot of new resources, a lot of free resources to bring back um, to the library and offer more programming and bring tools back to better serve our community. So I'm, I'm very excited about the program growing. And uh, let me see, I'm said I talk really fast, um, I have the dates of when the steady area tables are being arriving along with the chairs, the programs, um, uh, the summer programs have ended, uh, that report, um, once I get the statistics to the state library. I will pr- provide that in the um, next report or the following one, uh, depending on where it lands with the meeting. And um, on August twenty third, which is next Friday, uh, we are hosting a health and wellness fair for adults ages sixty and older. And I'm very excited, we have, um, we've been, it just kind of, kind of like with a garden, it just it just, everything fell together and perfect, li- lined up with the garden. Um, the master gardeners were just starting their program right when we got our grant for our garden program. So um, the senior, you know, as we were talking about providing more programs for this, um, our older adults or I'm I'm saying adults ages sixty and older. Um, I've been in communication with Imperial County Behavioral Health and they have reached out to everyone and put um, about ten um, resources together that will be coming to the library, providing information for, for everybody. And um, during that same time, um, one of the teams from the Behavioral Health will be providing painting activities and activities in the community room. And then we're working together with um, the Behavioral Health to provide some um, healthy drinks, I thought coffee. She mentioned some nice water with, you know. So um, so we're working together on, you know, to have some snacks and everything because they'll be, they'll be in and out. But um, we have the Callexico, um, um, let me see if I um, wellness center that will be doing um, screenings. And so there will be screenings, there'll be information, there'll be activities and there'll be a little bit of food and, and hopefully a time to connect with everybody and that provides the library an opportunity to show what we currently have. And then I'm designing a survey to um, have them, you know, identify what they're looking for. That ke- stays within the realm of the library, I mean, the realm of the library is kind of out like that, but then our library is. So what fits within our, our scope?
And what time is that?
This is from nine AM till twelve PM on Friday. And um, and then September is library card signup month. And um, for a long time, we've, well, for a very long time, um, we had some um, kind of flimsy red cards, you know, that um, um, were used for, for a very, for a long time. And then um, we actually got professional library cards, but uh, they're just kind of a little bland, you know, we have the city logo and, and um, the my first library card and then the sprout card. And then we have a lot of the little Yoda card because those were um, at a very they're priced very um, reasonable. I was able to get the same pricing for these four items. And so we're having these um, four uh, library, library cards created for September for library card signup month. It does, it is a six-week wait, so we'll be advertising them. Um, so, so people can come in and, and pick them up. Our Transformers is the, the theme this year for its twenty twenty four library card signup month. Um, staff picked out the library har- um, the tattoo um, with the library on it. They created the Imperial Public Library artwork to put on it to, so it, it's not just text, if you look at other library samples, it's just a text, so um, they did a great job on that. And then they're doing that for the Let Freedom Read as well. And um, what we did on the back of the cards usually has, it has our information, our general information over the library and then the scan um, code in the online where you sign. But um, I recent- recently saw something on social media where they had statements on the back. And um, so I met with staff and, and uh, asked about adding a statement. And so with these, with the Transformers, we'll be putting my public library transforms, forms li- lives underneath our information. Uh, the, the heart, I love my public library and then Let Freedom Read, which is um, the, uh, I can't think of the word once again. Um, the core of library services is to read is, 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 is essential for democracy. And so that will be um, stated on Let Freedom Read. And then um, in honor of our original library, which I barely learned. Um, so we wanna get that out there, you know, we always say we were the first incorporated in the county. And um, Imperial actually had the very first public library in the county. So we are creating a library card featuring the Carnegie Imperial Public Library card. And with that information, of course, we're tooting our horns, saying that Andrew Carnegie Imperial Public Library built in nineteen ten was the first library in Imperial County.
Where was the library, is that the same location that we have?
No, it was um, actually a block away, it was on um, Tenth Street. And so, and the reason that's no longer there is because it was built of brick. And Imperial is famous for earthquakes tearing down our brick, beautiful brick buildings. So nineteen forty, that, that building um, went down and then nineteen fifty-three, our original library um, went up. And then um, I'll let, I, I'll stop speaking now, um, there, here's some programming that's happening in the future, um, the CLA conference. Um, information was um, shared, um, all, everything's taken care of with the two trustees that are signed up for it. Um, for the driving, for all, I will forward that information to the rest of the um, our trustees, if, if in the future that you need to use a vehicle. Uh, there are some um, things that need to be done prior to um, being able to use a city vehicle, so you're covered under the insurance and so I'll provide that information to you. Okay, and that's it. I'll stand for any questions.
Very impressive that you've been working on all these um, grants that you've been trying to get for us. I know we talk about some of them, but when I look at a report this morning, I was like, wow, you really stepped up.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Amber, that's a lot of time just putting the, I know it takes more time to do the task, so I'm sure putting it on the report also. So thank you for putting it on there for us to see, it makes a big difference. Um, item C two, city manager report?
Nothing for me to see.
Thank you, and then item C three, um.
Well, no, it's only thank you and also, well, I was really moved by the uh, volunteers and so young, uh, so many young peoples has already, have already contributed a lot to our community. Really great.
Anything to report?
Um, love seeing the energy with the younger kids here and hoping that we'll have more in the future. And looking forward to all the dates we get to celebrate together.
Anything to report?
The only thing I have to report, I gotta thank Amber because um, we put in our Sir Optimist Club, we put our first movie. Um, about, um, it's kind of hard movie. So I wanted to thank her because she ordered, um, I believe it's ten books that we're gonna do our first um, out of the library book reading, so I'm putting a group of ladies together, we're gonna meet in different houses every week until we finish with the book, so that's gonna be our test and I know my friend Caroline, um, hi Mrs., she will be taking the start on that for us, so I think it's a great idea. And then we, we do more like that.
Yay to book clubs, I love it.
Book club to go.
Yeah, that's true and that encourages people, cause like I remember um, our trustee um, Banda had said, when was the last time, you know, and I can't tell you when was the last time I picked up a book and just read it casually. So I think encouraging that and just, it's almost like self-care, getting lost and it's, you know, it's, so I love that, I love that for us and you know, doing it with others just encourages you and keeps you accountable to not close the book and never open it again. Yes, so um, for my report, uh, I just wanna say, I did see a social media post about our garden getting um, cleaned out and ready to go, so I was really excited to see that. Um, my daughter loves seeing the garden, so uh, we came and she like, mom, and I was like, it's okay, you know, that's kind of how gardens work. You gotta come back and clean it up, so I'm glad that it's ready. Um, I was so glad to see all our volunteers and something that stood out to me that um, I think his name was Christian, said that he was so um, thankful for the welcoming environment. And so every time I come in here, whether it's for a program, whether it's just stopping by for a question or printing something, you know, before, I've always said that to the staff, you guys are just so welcoming. And that is what makes people come back, you know, the environment is everything. Um, but also the impact that these individuals have and everything that they're pouring into, um, it makes a big difference. And you know, maybe they'll be teachers later, but they're gonna remember where they got their start and Amber, you know, I got my start not in the library, but in Parks and Rec, so um, I'm sure, you know, they're being set up for success, so I really appreciate that.
She was very organized.
Um, but other than that, you know, thank you to everyone, thank you to all your staff for doing what you're doing and we look forward to carrying you guys. Um, you know, into the next few months and however long our terms are and it'll be fun, so.
If we have amazing staff. I try not to speak when you are speaking, but I mean, to hear our staff speaking up there, just your heart, I mean, they're, they're it's all about their heart, it's, it's, all of us are here because it's all about our heart.
Yeah, no, it is all heart and that makes the biggest difference when it's actually it means something to them, you know, they're not just another day in doing, no, they like want, I think if what lives are you gonna transform, it's a new adventure, someone new that's gonna walk through that door and the connection you can make and it's amazing, so, thank you, Amber.
You're gonna have to get that transformer.
Alrighty, well, if there's nothing else to report, then I will go ahead and adjourn this um, meeting at seven fifty. And the next regular scheduled meeting of the Imperial City Library Board of Trustees is Tuesday, September tenth, uh, twenty twenty-four.